Not to record on.
Okay.
Sounds good.
No, 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 really. You're absolutely right. Because she hasn't done what you both predicted. But he did say at the beginning. Yeah, he was pushing for, you know, to send in.
I'll say.
He's fun, pretty.
I gotta leave some down.
What's that happen?
I got it.
I'm sorry.
Doing good.
I'm glad you're here.
I may not live until then.
And even around here.
Bless you, Eric.
She says she has shingles.
That's why she's...
We put her in a hospital.
We don't, you know, give her a break.
We try to.
I mean, that's what she said.
Well, she lives on, she lives on the technical budget. She can't afford to lose out on that.
Hey, are these Carl Robinett? It is really bright.
That's what I did all this.
Oh, my question to her is why are you still with a family?
Because I've heard all kinds.
She just, I don't know.
A lot of people.
Well, I saw a picture she sent us.
Whatever.
It's okay.
Why the whole town?
Your table here, right outside.
It's like, I guess he's like, don't stay.
You're making me swag.
I don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why the whole town?
There's a table here, right outside.
Why?
It's like, I guess he's like, don't stay.
You're making me swag.
I don't want to.
She's like, we don't have to.
Yeah, for that.
Okay, thank you everyone.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
I love you.
I love you.
I have pneumonia all the way.
I mean, there's everything.
I said we were next to one.
I thought you were running.
I didn't go on.
I think they're like, we don't think about that.
I had pneumonia all the way.
I mean, there's everything.
I said we were next to one.
I thought you were running.
I didn't go on.
I didn't go on.
I mean, there's everything.
I said we were next to one.
I thought you were running.
I didn't go on.
I didn't go on.
I didn't go on.
It's all for the 27 blue guys.
I think they're my job.
Yeah, I think on the opposite. He wanted me to come out. I mean, he was supposed to see me.
Yeah, why?
He's coming by him. Why were you so... You know, I'm like, what was on board?
Yeah, I'm sort of like, I'm collecting.
I mean, that's me.
And we should have some annual work.
Like, you know, they're like, here.
Want me to come?
Yeah.
We sell up.
I'm done.
I don't think we're...
Yeah.
Why?
Because usually it's a hundred.
All right, so true.
I'm like, okay.
Good, how are you?
Paul was actually...
It doesn't do it on the outside, only here.
Okay, that's good.
So, more side in this case. Sorry to tell you, other than that.
Do it.
But you haven't been out to the front zone. That's a problem.
I saw that.
Well, you forget it.
Oh, yeah?
So, Paul showed up on the front. I'm going to where?
You know, any, any, any of your guys?
I'm studying.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the regular common council meeting to order at September 26, 2016, 7:00 P.M. Leading us in the pledge tonight again is Velexia, 368, or 378, excuse me, Zandra Lisa at 229 and Jackson Pac 67.
My pledge leans to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Thank you. Our youth report, if you notice, Mr. Conklin is not in the room. He unfortunately could not be here tonight. If anybody knows, about two weeks ago, he took a little bit of an accident, broke his leg. Just doesn't feel up to it tonight. So, he will be back with us in two weeks. So, we hope that he gets well. Senior report, better report, anyone? Mr. Segal?
I have neither.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our public hearing. This is the grant application for Restore New York Communities, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Valerie Majenski.
Did you just say something? I didn't hear what it was.
Restore New York Communities Grant Application Public Hearing, Ms. Valerie Majenski. Can I stop you for a second? There's a young lady in the back of the room who's doing, she has to do like a public hearing, a regular meeting. She's gonna think we're absolutely nuts, but it's okay. We get all our business done.
We do. Thank you and good evening. And yes, this is the public hearing on behalf of the upcoming grant application, which is due October 3. And to take care of that grant application, it is for the Empire State Development Corporation, E S D C, Restore New York Communities Initiative Round Four. And in this instance, the city of Port Jervis is considering the demolition of a number of properties. And in order to proceed along those lines, those properties were listed for three days running in the legal ads in the record, beginning on Sunday, September 18th, the 19th, let's see, yep. 18th, 19th, and 20th. So, we're proceeding along the proper notification. In this issue, to move ahead with the demolition, we have to finalize the applications. There's a lot of work going on to do that. There have to be third-party estimates, engineering reports, et cetera. Those are underway. And at this point, it's the discussion of those properties that are listed. Both properties that are owned by the municipality, city of Port Jervis, and some private properties are also listed. Any one that goes through the process will be properly vetted and memorandum of understanding for each property will be signed. And that would clear the way to put the properties into the grant application. No more than $20,000 can be allocated towards the demolition of any one property. And there is a 10% match by the city for any project. So, any questions?
Any questions for the color?
I just have a question. As far as the, is it just for residential properties? And the quarters?
Well, it's properties, they're city-owned, owned by the municipality or privately owned. And they had to be within particular neighborhoods. They had to have some relationship to one another. It wasn't, you know, pick one way out there and five are over here. We actually had to go through the list with E S D and claim and show up essentially on a map that if these properties were addressed, then it would clear the way, help clear the way to economic development.
Their central focus...
And then we're done, you know, rehabilitating them.
Now, what it is, is that they're centrally located out of the central business district. If there was any contact with the central business district by going by these houses, because we had a couple that were not, so they weren't allowed to be put on this list. These are particular houses that really are beyond repair.
All righty.
Any other questions? Anybody from the council? How many were there? Originally, there were 11, right?
We have 11 listed, yes.
But we would have to get the agreements with the private owners on some of them. And if we don't get those agreements, then we won't move forward with those particular properties.
Is there a list?
Yes.
The list isn't... We have, they all got the list, but we'll make sure you can get a copy of it. All right.
After the property, after the structures are taken down, what is going to happen then with those lots?
The idea is those lots would be made available either to municipal use, sale, rebuilding on those lots where appropriate, et cetera. So, that's open right now. But the idea, it's supposed to ultimately lend itself to economic development. So, having a bare lot there is not really the intention. The intention is to help stimulate economic development. So, if you take down a house and it's a good lot for a house, then ideally, a new house should go back on that lot.
So, for instance, there's one lot, there's actually two houses next to each other that would make a bigger lot and would improve the neighborhood. So, the idea would be to just combine those two lots and leave it as one. There's another house that is on such a very tight lot that the neighbors could get the adjoining properties and expand their property. But many of, most of them are, they would be tore down. The idea is that you would rebuild on them privately.
Are they already zoned for whether it be home development or...
I think they're all, all except one is in the R1 zone. I believe all over one.
They're gonna say it's R1s.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's no spot zoning or anything like that. Anything else? Council? Not hearing any. I had to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So, I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, a second by Mr. Bobozzo, all in favor. Opposed? So, carried. Thank you. We have a presentation by Ms. Flo Santini and Gina Tanky on their Thanksgiving dinner for seniors.
We changed the pledge again.
Sorry.
Mayor, council members, city members, Gina, our president, vice president here of the Deer Park Senior Council. Do we look this way? Do we look this way? Back towards you.
Look at the camera.
Yeah, look at me right there.
Well, we're here again because it's this time of year. Now, it's a little early, but we're on our fifth year of the Deer Park Senior Council Turkey Dinner for our seniors. And Gina and I wanna just let you know that we are so grateful that Kathy Chortel has taken, given us the Farnum House to help with the seniors in Port Jervis. And our, we are, it's just been so overwhelming. I mean, I think we're up to 25. We just put the flyers out Friday, and we're up to 25 reservations already with our seniors. And when I say our seniors, I mean, it's Port Jervis, Deer Park, Matamoros. I mean, they're coming. We don't care. I mean, they're our seniors, and we don't care where they live. They're coming. They're gonna have a good dinner. They're gonna have a hot dinner. They're gonna be delivered. We don't deliver to Pennsylvania. We don't deliver. It's Port Jervis and Deer Park. That's where we deliver tonight, and that's it. They need a ride. We will pick them up in Deer Park in Port Jervis. We don't pick up in Matamoros, but we will deliver here. And, but the Farnum House has been a blessing that helps us because they delivered, I believe, 80-some-odd meals to Mahakonok and Waters Edge last year, plus a handful of houses in Port. And then we sat, how many did we see? 125? 125 at the senior center last year. And with the prep, and the kids came up from the high school and helped us set up the night or two before and the morning of it. And Mr. Bobozzo knows about doing the pots and the pans. He's helped us with that before. And we have so many volunteers that help us and stuff, because it's a big, it's a big undertaking for this. And I got a funny feeling it's gonna be bigger this year. But I just wanted to tell you, thank you for everything everybody does for us. And if anybody has any questions and, or, you know, could want to call and volunteer, call me at the office on the flyers. Hang them around. Gina's number's on it, my number's on it. Put them here. We will be putting them, they take them at the senior center, and then they put them in their, the Mahakonok and Waters Edge, and they put them around. We do put an ad in the little paper, so they have it in the little paper for our numbers and stuff. And then that's how they know that what's going on at the senior center. The date is November 19th, 3 o'clock, and they can sign up till a week before that, so we know how many turkeys. And I want to tell you, two years ago, Cutback Auto donated the turkeys. So, they donated, what, 12? 13 turkeys. Last year, Tanky's Garage donated the turkeys. This year, Brim's donating all the turkeys. So, all the turkeys have been donating. Next year, we're going after Trophy. So, we're going after all the junkyards and the cat and yards. But we will buy them from ShopRite and Price Shopper, but they do, they are, they've been, they've been very helpful with us when we go after them. And then we will be coming to Port Jervis to businesses and stuff for that. But ShopRite gives us some donations and stuff. But if you know anybody who wants to donate other stuff, you know, because we do go get many pounds of patinas and pies and stuff to feed our seniors and stuff.
We go to Sam's Club because we have the best barbecue.
Yeah.
You need tomatoes? Sure. Lots of tomatoes.
Sure, put them on the salads, yeah. But yeah, if, like I said, you need any questions or anything, you know anybody, but put them up, and we'll be happy, you know, to either deliver it, or they want to come up to the senior center, or we'll deliver food to them in Deer Park or Port.
Thank you very much.
Anybody?
That's a wonderful thing. Did you say you're gonna serve Port Jervis seniors at the Farnum House?
No, no, Farnum House cooks. Kathy Chortel has taken that over, I believe, two or three years ago. And we give her all the food. She tells us what she needs, and we deliver all the food to her.
And then what happens is from there, meals are delivered to the shut-ins.
Yeah. And she delivers to Mahakonok and Waters Edge and to the residents of Port Jervis that she can.
Thank you very much.
Gina, what's your name?
You guys do a wonderful job. A fantastic day for our seniors. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Good night.
Oh, you don't want to stay? Hello? You sure? Okay, I'll now open the Florida public comment. Anyone that would like to speak, just come up, state your name, either the word that you live in or the city that you live in, and you have a five-minute limit. You can speak on any subject.
I, last time I was here, Kelly, I asked you to find out about the walls, whether they could be six foot high or, you said you would let me know.
Yeah, I deferred that to our corporation council, because you came with an attorney.
Okay, well, I don't have an attorney again, so.
Oh, no. We can't bounce back and forth, Mr. Belcher.
I can.
You can, but we can't. So, you don't have to have an attorney speak with our attorney.
I have to... You don't have an attorney. I'll call you.
I do not have an attorney.
And we'll set up a meeting.
Because I told them, I said, I'd rather set up a meeting and sit down.
Well, that would be fantastic. Yeah. I guess the only other thing I have to say is, I put a FOIL request in, and I've done lots of them. And I always got answers for my FOIL request. This time, I put a FOIL request in for any properties that had violations like mine. They told me it was gonna be $100 for a FOIL request. So, I said, could you give me that in writing? And you can't give me that in writing. They won't give me that in writing. So, I called, I called the state, and I found out that it's against the law. You can't do that.
You said this last time. Didn't you, didn't you get your FOIL answers?
Those ones that had been prepared, were notified they were available, and I do not truthfully know if you picked them up or not at this point. And we're still sitting on the desk.
Well, I have them. I've had them for days now. Supposed to be another copy. But I had to call. I'll tell you who I called. Oh, where is it? Do you remember that thing I called, Lisa, that place?
Kristen O'Leary.
Sorry?
Her name is Kristen O'Leary.
Committee on Open Government. Yes, Committee on Open Government. I called them, and they said that you have to give me the FOIL request. So, anyway, I found a guy. $3.75. Not $100. I have all the emails, and they told me, Committee on Open Governments, told me to, from now on, do it in email, not conversation. That way, I have, I have proof. And Mr. Rivera has a, has a little something against me with all the violations that he gave me. If he stood on my property and took pictures of all the stuff that he says that's on my property, he should turn around and face the other direction. I've got pictures that I've had since April of all the garbage, the workbench in the street, which, and this all started because this man blocked my driveway. That's how it all started. This guy blocked my driveway. I called the police. The police came. Five days later, he moved the vehicles. Five days later. So, I got mad, and I parked my truck in that spot, and I got a ticket. Okay? And Mr. Rivera, I thought he was on my side, but he says, give me more information. Picture of the motorcycle repair shop. I gave it to him. He said, it's not motorcycle repair shop. A business card for that. That address, that location, a business card saying that this guy's been in business for 30 years. He still does nothing. And when I ask him a question, he won't give me an answer. And you said he only answers to you. He's the public, he's supposed to talk to the public. He's supposed to give me answers. This is crazy. I gotta go through all this bullshit. That's what it is. Bullshit.
This is why I said to the corporation council, I'm gonna need to sit down and have a meeting.
I would love to do that. And that's why I called you, to have you, to talk to you, but you don't seem to want to talk to me. I built this shed in 2011. See the shed I built in 2011? There's six-foot-high wall in the back. In 2014, I didn't like it. I tore it down and made it four-foot high, except for the end. I made, I left it at six-foot high. He tells me I can't do it. I really think he's wrong.
Can't do what? Take it down?
He tells me I can't do it at six-foot. Uh, this, I appreciate that. I would love to talk and get it over with, because it is real. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom King. I'm president of the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association. We are the nation's oldest Second Amendment group, and we are the state's largest, and we are also the largest affiliated of the NRA in the, in the United States. We founded the NRA nine months after our, after our organization was incorporated in New York City in 1871. But just as a little bit of history, I wanted to let you know that we are, we are not a organization that will be running out or leaving the state. We've been here too long. Many of you have a copy of our, of our magazine called The Bullet. The Bullet was chosen as the best state association magazine in the United States, and we will be getting an award for that soon. But the real purpose of me being here is, is that every year, we have an, we have an annual meeting. And we hold it in different parts of the, different parts of the state. And Maria Mann suggested that we had never been to the Port Jervis area, and that why don't we have an annual meeting down here? And I said, well, why not? Let's do it. And she talked to some people, and Waterside Park was suggested as a spot to have the meeting. What we, what we would be doing is, we would be having an outdoor exposition. We'd be having various demonstrations, fly fishing, you know, animal clawing, you know, things like that. Probably some vendors. At this point, we have no idea what the vendors would be. We don't even have a date for it yet, other than sometime in the late, in the late spring. So, I know one of the questions I'm gonna be asked is, how many people? Well, I can't give you an answer to that yet. It's gonna be somewhere between 450 and 1,200 people that will be coming from our association. So, I don't know how many local people will show up. That's, depends a lot on, one, the weather, two, the weather, and, three, what we, what we, what we're gonna be charging for the event, okay? We normally just charge a nominal fee, just to cover, cover costs of setting up, renting tents, and, you know, stuff like that. I, I don't know if I have, I mean, I have any kind of information you may want. I don't know exactly what you're looking for me, looking for me tonight, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have for me and provide information based on that.
Okay, I'll open it to the council. Any questions?
Hello, I'm Austin Trophy. I'm also a member of the tourism board, and this is an idea that was brought up at a couple tourism board meetings over the past couple of months, and talking about the Sportsman's Expo. But one of the things that I know the council people wanted was a proposal as to what you would be providing. Would you provide tents? Do you provide security? Do you need road closures? Do you need any sort of DPW, police assistance, things like that?
Okay, well, I, no, I understand that, okay? And I had not seen the facility until tonight, okay? And I'm not sure what the city, you know, you know, usually does for an event like that. And I mean, anything is work, you know, we can work anything out. I mean, I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I just don't know what your parameters are. You know, we can pretty much fit with anything.
Well, we've never had any event, I'm sorry, we've never had any event like this before, so I don't think we're quite sure how we would set it up, so that's why we're hoping that you have your expertise.
Oh, no, I mean, I can do that, but I mean... Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about is, I mean, do you, do you normally, I don't know if you normally close the streets. Walking down there, I wouldn't see any street that needed to be closed. You could use the one entrance of the park, okay? Security, yeah, we can provide, we can provide security. A lot of, a lot of places request that we hire their off-duty policemen. I didn't know if that was gonna be something that, that you would require or not. We do have people that we can, that we can use for that purpose, okay? As far as tents go, until I saw it tonight, you have a pavilion, there's a couple of pavilions down there, but we would have to put up a fair large tent, because we would have, kind of, you know, like to have someplace for the people to get out of the rain if it's raining. And you can be sure, by the way, that if we schedule this, that it's gonna rain, okay?
We can use the rain, so come on down.
Yeah, okay, but you can almost be sure of that. But, you know, any, any of those things we can, we can work through, it just, it depends on what you require. What would you require for some, for someone else who was holding an event there? You know, that's what we have to find out, and...
The most, the most important thing is the insurance.
Oh, no, we have insurance.
Insurance coverage.
Yeah, we have it for all of our, for all of the events. I mean, you know, we've had... I mean, you know, we've had, we've been in business for 171 years, and we've had, I think, 100? I don't know how many annual, annual meetings we've had, but we, we do have, we have.